The one I was probably given was not infected, but it wasn't not before time without the positive.
Yeah.
You know, you don't even think of these things unless something happens like that. Sorry, that happened. They wanted to hold 29 or 25 people out for that.
Yeah, it's expensive, I know. Why isn't it doing that?
The one I was probably given was not infected, but it wasn't not before time without the positive.
Yeah.
You know, you don't even think of these things unless something happens like that.
Sorry, that happened.
They wanted to hold 29 or 25 people out for that.
Yeah, it's expensive, I know. Why isn't it doing that?
Brooklyn Slightboard, this is the regular meeting of the Slightboard for November 19, 2024. So, let's start off with announcement. And I'd like to start off, I hope this doesn't bother anyone, so I'm going to speak about Warren Article 20. It's unlikely that I'll be able to express my views at town meeting because it's very likely that the article will be tabled. So I'll state my position here. And since I can't do it on the county list serve, I can do it here, so that's what I'm going to do. So, the substance of Warren Article 20 calling for ceasefire in Gaza and release of hostages is pretty much irrelevant at this point. But the suffering in Gaza continues and we continue to look the other way. The motion to table Warren Article 20 and cut off discussions at town meeting, in my opinion, is a form of looking the other way. So I will vote no on motion to table. There's a line in the movie, called Things Like These, that is chillingly relevant. That line is, "To get on in this life, there are things you have to ignore." The things ignored in the movie were terrible abuses of young girls defined in a laundry fund by the Catholic Church in Ireland. Gaza is not a thing you should ignore in order to get on in this life. Brookline residents, our neighbors, have been traumatized by the events in Gaza and the impact on their families and friends. They asked for the opportunity to bring to discussion Gaza through consciousness of their Brooklyn neighbors in a forum that they selected at town meeting. This debate on list serve, a hearing to the select board, the fire committee, etc., is not what they asked for and does not provide a more structured conversation that town meeting allows. Whatever the final vote on Warren Article 20 or one of the amendments, a debate at town meeting would have at least been acknowledgement of the existence of the tragedy in Gaza and their pain. As people know, when we are confronted with incidents of hate here in Brookline, whether antisemitism, hatred against Asians, Muslims, immigrants, or others, my message has always been that hatred is indivisible. For example, those who hate Jews will hate me. By the same token, indifference in the face of human suffering is indivisible. If you're indifferent to the suffering in Gaza, should I expect that you will care when the incoming president begins to round people up and concentrate them in camp? As he promised he would do? And should I expect you to speak up if the incoming president directs the power of the federal government against me? Because I work to make Brookline a haven for immigrants and refugees who are under attack? As he also promised he would do to progressive communities and their leaders like Brooklyn? So again, I will vote no on the motion to table. So, thank you. Any other comments or announcements from Slightboard? Say, John? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was being forward. No, thank you. And thank you to that statement. Which wasn't my purpose in wanting to say anything tonight, but I, having heard your statement and having heard you speak out lately before, I want, I want to be sure people know that, as in the past, I agree with you. And I agree that we, we can hope for a change in the minds of some folks at town meeting. We might come around this time to say, if this has gone far enough without there being the opportunity for those in pain to speak at the Brookline Town Meeting. To effectively cut off their speech once was understandable under the circumstances. And I think we all know that that, that action would inevitably lead to a return to this particular petition, but in a much more moderate and I think deserving of discussion form. And now we have the folks who were denied speech at the town meeting six months ago, coming back with a second attempt to go halfway towards wording their motion in a more acceptable form to receive wider support at town meeting. And yet the same people who wanted that discussion to have no possibility of happening are saying again, that discussion shouldn't have no possibility of happening. But think about everything that has happened in the six months since we last turned away folks who wanted to speak out. They have suffered more death. They have been taken in a more hopeless position. The cause of Israel, which many of us, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of us, both here, has been severely damaged in the world opinion. And the damage to that cause showed itself in the election results that we just got. Because of dissatisfaction of large communities in sympathy with the victims of that situation in the Middle East, abandoning their traditional support of the Democratic Party. So, we can't pretend nothing has changed since our last opportunity to allow people to speak out about their pain. Much has changed in the situation in the Middle East and much has changed in the willingness of those who sponsored the initial resolution to try and meet people halfway. Let's try to also change how we approach this issue when it comes to town meeting. And open our minds and open our hearts to allowing our neighbors to speak. That's all that we're asking to do. And it will turn out, as, as it should turn out, to be the decision of town meeting, having heard the speakers speak, entering into a deliberation, consulting their conscience, and making the decision on where they think town meeting should stand on the resolution in front of us. But we can't get there if we don't allow people to speak. So, I hope we'll allow people to speak. And thank you.
Any other comments or announcements? Being done, public comment. Do we have anyone? Public comment?
We don't have people who signed up in advance, but I'll read the rules and see if it's good to see. Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once fifteen minutes has been met, there is an opportunity at the conclusion of the select board's business for additional comments. Members of the public come time for each question during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining and when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. Any person wishing to speak must begin their comments by identifying themselves with their full name and either their Brookline precinct number or street address. There is no one who signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak during public comment? Is there anyone online? If so, please raise your hand using the raise the hand feature at this time. It looks like no one is indicating their desire to speak.
Okay, next, we have miscellaneous items. I'd like to take items 3A through 3F along the discussion. 3A is a request of accepting a rebate in the amount of $114,000 from Everso. The energy conservation measure is crystal clear. And items 3B through 3F are matters that were taken up at a Slightboard licensing hearing on Wednesday, November 13. And all of them were presented to the court after the hearing about any comments or objections. Unless anyone had some reason to discuss any of those items separately, I will rule approval. On favor of items 3A through 3F, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Sjoer, aye. Mike Sandman, aye. All ayes. David Fromm, aye. And Chairwoman, aye. Okay. Next, Abby Dean Scholarship, the discussion and possible vote to authorize the office of town technicals to file a speed trade complaint in court to modify the Abby Dean Scholarship eligibility condition to increase possible recipients. Who is that? Okay. Stand up in conditions south and south, why would you vote for this?
Yeah, maybe that's closer. Or maybe yeah, it's with Lincoln. Thank you, thank you so much. This is an issue that was brought to the attention of the Office of Town Healthful by a number of individuals, primarily from the Brookline Community Foundation Scholarship Committee as well as the Brookline High School Scholarship Committee. This relates to a request to the town back in the nineteen twenties, an amount of about $3,000. It has grown now to over $3 million. That's primarily been because each scholarship is permitted to attend the Brookline High School for ones who are going to, was originally Simmons or Radcliffe, now Simmons or Harvard. There's not that many students that go to those schools and those who do, the schools are doing a pretty good job of meeting their financial needs. So, we are seeking now your approval to file a complaint for speed trade to allow us to expand those conditions so that the town can award more colleges. Next, can I ask any questions?
All right. What are the boundaries of the, the, the power expansion?
That's a great question. So, the specific answer may change as we continue to research this and work with the Office of the Attorney General, who needs to attend the petition. Speed trade involves matching the original intent with allowing the town to spend the money to avoid the waste. So there's no one exact answer. We can tell from Charlotte Pett, who left the money to the town, that she was intending to benefit female graduates of the high school in the selection of schools, Simmons and Radcliffe at the time, serving women in the area. So we do intend to keep that restriction in place for female graduates. We intend to keep in a preference for Simmons and Harvard and then expand the eligibility out of the permit.
And if you would consider it appropriate, I think, restricting it to female graduates, wouldn't you also restrict it to schools that are not collegiate?
So, not necessarily. That is, that is sort of an open question here. So for looking at the original intention of Charlotte Pett, she, we can tell, meant to help female graduates by sticking to schools that were serving women. But she did not include other schools that were serving women at the time, for example, Wellesley or other private women's colleges. So, you know, she was looking to help women. We don't know that she was specifically intending all women in colleges. So we do know from some research that the individuals working on this have done that there was at least a personal connection to Radcliffe or Harvard in that the woman that the scholarship was named after took some classes at the Harvard Annex, which became Radcliffe, which became Harvard. And we know that Charlotte Pett's father was a professor at Harvard. So the research indicates some person kind of into those specifics.
Any other question? Yeah, and how long do you think this can take? Be a long process, isn't it?
That's another good question. It's hard to say the exact timeline. I've been looking at other speed trade petitions, once they've been filed with the Assembly of the Attorney General. A single justice of the Supreme Court takes under advisement. I've seen those been acted on fairly quickly within a few months. But we would need to put the complaint together first with your approval and take the assembly.
Any other question?
I just thought it might be interesting to note, because it was in the news just this week, that, this was in the Harvard Journal, particularly, particularly Harvard. They did some research on students from public high schools that are dealing to Harvard, you know, someplace near it. And determined, and if it was any physics, if I just spoke the statistics, please help me, something like ten percent of all of these students that came hardly from public high schools come from a subset of just twenty-one public high schools in the United States. And, you know, with my usual Brookline cheerleader hat, I catch a look to see if Brookline is one of those twenty-one. And I think it's a great distinction and a study to our sources in the years. But yes, Brookline is one of twenty-one school, public high schools that account for ten percent of all of the admissions to Harvard. With the lawyer who, the lawyer, the prosecutor, the lawyer, Amy, wants to know, do we think Harvard and/or Simmons might oppose this?
It's a very good question. Legally, they may not have standing where the money is left to the town to benefit the students rather than money left to those particular schools. But we don't want there to be an adversarial process here either. So we do anticipate moving in those rules and letting them know the plans of the new board to complete with your approval. I do think by keeping in the condition of preference to students with need attending those schools, that would mitigate that.
Well, good luck with the petition.
Thank you.
Hey, unless there are any other questions, I'd like to move the approval of the Abby Dean Scholarship.
Oh, if I may, sorry. Just in terms of the agenda language, it's on the agenda for Thursday with a little bit more specificity to hold the vote then. We'd ask that you do that.
Well, it's not too late. At the time if you want to, they are discussing.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Take yourself on Thursday.
Thank you very much.
To Candy Folds, Pizza Row, Scott Lechar, Kathy Gabel, and John Heifner, the community members who brought this here. They were really champions that we passed through and did great work bringing it to our attention, working with us to figure out how to make it work. And it's very grateful to them, to work with the Council Office, and it's a great result.
Why can't we vote this?
Usually we try and give you some space, we voted if they're doing it, but also we build up on the agenda that we're voting missing.
This is discussion is possible.
Yes.
Oh, that's still here, isn't it?
The last thing you want is for there to be someone who say, oh, okay, you have time on Thursday.
It also is on the agenda.
Yes.
Something people will say. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next, Warren Article Review. Let's start off with reconsideration of Warren Article 7. Now, as I understand, we voted favorable action on November 4, but later a correction needed to be made, we're revoting the article with correction. That correction is with at least no language in the definition of two-point-five-story building. Item C in that inspection, which read, we're taking this out. Let's see, section 5019.2 and in section 5.22.1.c, in your motorium, those parents shall not apply to those building districts with a maximum allowable height of two-point-five stories at table 5.01. So, would you like to explain what that means, Maria?
Absolutely. Maria Morelli.
It's clear what it means, but, you know, any bad.
Of course. Thanks, Karen. Maria Morelli, being a planner in the regulatory division. We meant to speak this out, we previously have this language. We were getting the Warren Article before staff submitted to town meeting. We were getting the warrant article before staff submitted to town meeting. And I just forgot to delete that as I promised several decisions. So for background, section 509.2ed is under design review. And that says that if you have a bi-rite structure or home that has unfinished space, say in the attic, or basement, or elsewhere, that if that unfinished space were to be finished, and it would put the FAR, it would exceed FAR, you have to go to design review, get some department. We wanted to restore that. Section 5.22 of 1C pertains to a 10-year moratorium. So if we go back to that example, and we want to finish that space, but we need only under 5 to exceed FAR, we have to wait 10 years to see, we won't exceed relief under one of those provisions to exceed FAR. Previously, we didn't want that applied. Now we're going to restore those restrictions.
Maria, did they see, we vote the language yet?
I believe they are doing so tonight.
They're doing it?
Yes.
So we can revoke our language, assuming that we see it's...
I have one other issue I do. I do want to kind of reconsider seven, but when we reconsider it, I would also...
Okay. Let's vote on reconsideration. It is between you, me, or John. I vote reconsideration of warrant article seven. Any objections? So all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Sjoer, aye. Mike Sandman, aye. Paul Warren, aye. And David Fromm, aye. Chairwoman. So now, we have it on the table. Do you want to vote these separately?
I would like to. Well, why not? I first, I do believe that we need, we should adopt this language to get us to mind and make sense of, to do that. But I have a couple of printouts, and I should, in this town, I know it gets placed up in the full screen, but I realize I need to convert them up. So, you know, I want to walk through the past few days. Karen Bruton has published some analysis that she's done. Oh, when is it?
Yeah, all board members have.
Oh, I know that, I'm sorry. That's okay. I'm not, I'm not going to... Karen Bruton has done amazing work in the past week and a half, and just in the past few days, to help map the changes by article, how many parcels, and map those to graphical representations on our zoning maps. And in the process of going through that, preparing for town meeting, I have a significant issue about what we're doing. So what's in front of you is two maps. On the left is a map of the changes that we overwhelmingly adopted last November as part of the MDTH community council. So this was separate from the four article one, which passed, I think, 84, 70%. We rezoned 80 parcels at that time. At this town meeting, articles 7, 8, 9, 14, and 15, we are rezoning 8,500 parcels, more than 8,500 parcels. Essentially, the entire town. Now, the white parts of the map, Harvard Street, a little bit of Washington Square, it's true, we're actually rezoning those too, because I think we're doing that with article 10 for the form they sold you. But it's really not a material change to the property owners. The next page shows article seven. So this is the map for article seven, 4,500 parcels. That's substantial amount of rezoning within the community. And if you look at the next page, my concern is that we're doing this, article seven and the others, and the public is really unaware. On the left-hand side is the engagement that we went through. Actually, Maria did most of this, which is incredible faculty for article one, which rebuilt 800 parcels. We mailed something, almost 30,000 postcards to property owners and merchants and residents. Maria helped 40-plus community meetings and presentations. There were design workshops where hundreds of participants came. We did a pre-workshop survey, which included hundreds of responses. There were sight visits, you walked around each neighborhood, right? In the corridor of Harvard Street. And you even helped office hours, 100-plus hours of dedicated time, where people just come in and speak with you. And then, of course, as I mentioned, there were 15-plus hours of watching presentations for 800 parcels, to be compliant with Mass Day Law. Tonight, and tomorrow likely, we're considering five articles that will rezone 8,500 parcels. And we haven't done comparable interactions, community engagement. I would argue that we probably done any of those that we've done last night. And for those reasons, I'm asking that when we do, in our reconsideration, and after we vote the night, that does need to have a change, because the reasons can be real, that I vote to make a motion that we refer article seven to the confederates and steering committee, which is consistent with what the advisory committee.
Did you want anything?
Sure. If there's a time for me to speak, I'd like to do it.
Right. I agree with you, first of all. This article comes out of an action by town meeting in its own smaller, much smaller, more significant town in the, essentially in this way, in order to hopefully, you know, get down to the footprints. So it has, that passed town meeting by the initial margin, the resolution, that I mean, the margin. So I'm not sure that nobody knows about this, because it's gone through a process.
Well, actually, I appreciate what you're saying. Like, you know, first, the vote at town meeting was, I think, a resolution in that we wanted to, brought up by Nancy Heller, explore opportunities to reduce tiered elements. I don't have an issue at all with this morning opportunities to reduce tiered elements. The challenge that I have is that I would wager that this breed, amount of breed on this chart, every one of those little blocks represents a parcel. And in fact, each parcel may represent multiple dwellings. So this is where the residents, renters and owners of the Brookline, and I would wager that the vast majority of these particular property owners and renters have no idea that there's a need. And, you know, your home is very important. If it's for some folks, it's, if they're a property owner, it's probably a major investment for them, if not their most important asset, in their value that they have. And I think that zoning, in my view, is a contract between the resident, the property owner, and the town. And when we go to change that contract, we should notify that there's going to be a change. And I think that, again, this, I really appreciate the work that has been done on this. This is not a complaint at all about the technical aspects of the articles. I'm not, and I'm not actually arguing the merits. I'm saying that we are rezoning the entire town, and we have not provided notice to the property owners. I think that seven, including eight, nine, and 14 are optional. Article 15, in my view, is we have to be compliant with state law on February, and we need to prove that 100% behind it. But article seven, like the others, optional. I think we should give pause, not rush, and give time to...
We'll vote that, everybody.
Okay. I knew that, you told me already. That's a long round.
Oh, I'm happy with it.
Can you bring your hand, babe? Oh, yeah. I want to, first of all, thank Paul, and also thank the board as a whole. I think, at the initiative of Paul, but then I think spreading among the members of the board, there has been this withdrawing realization that mapping zoning changes should be an essential part of any, any time that we consider zoning changes in the town. As a basic principle, we need to say, there's a lot of things we need to know about the zoning thing, but let's start with one of the areas of the town that will be impacted by the zoning thing, whatever the zoning thing. And when you see it on a map, it's only when you see it on a map, that you begin to appreciate, this could have, you know, pretty widespread impacts. And then go from there to, and I say with certainty, that people in those areas of impact even know that we're doing this. And, you know, we may hear from a constituency group or another constituency group that is laser focused on zoning. There are those groups in town. But that doesn't mean that anyone who's not laser focused on zoning, but who would be impacted, is irrelevant to this process. So in this case, we have an article which, I can't say for certain right now, at this minute, is this an article that is likely to increase density in the town? Or decrease density in the town? Or decrease the possibility of future additions to density in the town? Or, you know, is it an article that is going to have no conflict with any other things that we do? Because we don't even know which of the other things that are before us we're going to do. But I just think that the trend that developed over time, and the sort of review of these zoning articles, the trend of saying, you know, there's a lot at stake here, covering a large, large swath of the town, when you add them all up together. Maybe the best approach for all of these articles, even the ones that we think come closest to being ready, and this comes, you know, as close as anything to being ready. But even the ones that come closest to being ready really deserve to be considered in light of all the others and in light of the comprehensive zoning process that we set in motion. So I'm going to go along with Paul and say referral, without you.
One more thing. The other, the other aspect of this article, and I think Mike brought this up last week, and we were discussing with another article, I'm here, it's 14 or something. And you had made the point, well, as I was saying, well, should we do no action? You said, well, if you do no action, that shuts the door, and that will happen future. Essentially, you know, saw this town meeting, and so you would advocate a referral. This, this particular article is going to require two weeks. And, and right now, it's, it is controversial. We, there are two different motions, currently ours, I'm listening to the advisory committee. I know that there's some advocates within, within town meeting that are very concerned about the limitations that this may play, may play on future, future development. And I suspect that it's unlikely that we would achieve the two-year development anyway. So that's my view. And referral would actually allow us to bring this back, you know, in a refined way, or a different way, or the same way. But anyway, I'd suggest if we move Maria's language to fix the article first, I'd like to do that, and then make a motion to...
Maria?
Thank you very much for your comment. I, first of all, I say how much I respect that you care about community engagement. As you know, there were like 70 plus, maybe, a lot of the base space. In addition to the development review that you do with our chapter 48 pieces, where there's, I've been here 10 years, working with the planning board, MDA, and facing sometimes people's prank on our shoulders because of the name of the character that they feel like they don't have to pull over. So a lot of that is cumulative experience working with your constituents and what we're observing. So this is really policy in the book, and it's meant to hedge neutral risk. There is uncertainty. We do not know how the Attorney General will interpret the act. We don't know what the state will promulgate in the way of regulations that affect all of those districts. So I'd like you to look at that map and consider the risks that are facing because we don't have any certainty over how the AG and the state will interpret the act. It is absolutely incomplete, the civic. We don't know if we can legitimately put a cap on the number of issues on a single family lot. And that is a primary hedge for that risk. The other has to do with the two-family difference where our constituents aren't planning. They're so frustrated with the planning board, which has no control. They don't have regulatory control over that, that, that development pattern. So if there is a change, because there's a relatively low FAR utilization rate, because the FAR is so high, the planning board and the ZDA don't have any tools to negotiate with the opponent. So I'd like you to keep in mind that this is something that we are hearing, not just for this warrant article, but over at least the 10 years that I've been here, where people do want something that references the existing development pattern. It's separated from density, has nothing to do with density. We know from the map that we do. People are still able to use either ZDRIT, or one of those traditions under section 5.2, to not just map some of their FAR, but exceed. So it doesn't take away your rights to use their land. It's just rearranging the volume on that land that better ensures adaptive use. And I also want to remind you that the planning board did vote to support this. So this, though, you know, and that's, that's statutorily, if the planning board does vote to support, it can come back.
So the advisory committee and their analysis expressed a concern that if warrant article seven passes, that could incentivize wider buildings as a means to maximize FAR.
I'm really glad that you asked that question, because warrant article seven would not be inducing more spread than current aspects of the bylaw to town. So first of all, there are open space requirements that are tied to FAR. If your FAR grows, then you're meeting the open space requirement growth. So that does temper the footprint. Also, there are other aspects of the bylaw that exactly encourage narrower setbacks, which bylaw has to fix, and warrant article seven has nothing to do with that. We often see, because of 509.2N, and the 10 more important, people will build a house where all of the FAR is in two stories, and then they have that half-story, either unfinished basement, or unfinished attic. So warrant article seven is not going to do anything differently from what we see now regarding footprint. If we want to control footprint, then we need more, more day zoning parameters.
Mike, can you...
Last night, the, I attended a meeting of the, when, basically, the neighborhood immediately around the Chesapeake office block of the west end of, 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 at the new, new Brookline line, the Chesapeake Hill across from the street development. And there was a great deal of concern there about density in the proposed development on the Chesapeake office block. And one of the comments was, you know, it's, why are you doing this to us when there's not a symbol, there aren't symbols proposing for density elsewhere? It doesn't affect the law, while we're doing, looking at that. But looking at this map, it's really powerful, because there's a lot of space there where density is limited by, it's limited by reducing the potential for conversion of buildings. And, yes, I'm actually, actually, I'm not all that sympathetic to the statements that, that the building that's over here, it's new, should look like the building that's over there at all. That's not, I don't have to agree with that. And so what I'm concerned about is that we're going to run into that, that barrier to the building if we, if we do something like this, which is why we both, I believe, we managed to, for the phone first one. So I look to changing, changing that position.
Well, I do agree.
We do.
John.
They were like.
Yeah.
I'm confused about it now.
That's okay.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
But you're, but you are right about the density, and, you know.
And I'm thinking to myself, do I, I refreshed my memory, and then I lost it when I read it. But it is an extremely. Okay, so, okay, yeah, I'm wondering what to do.
Are you wondering what to do? I'm wondering what to do about referral.
Can we, can I suggest?
I just want to respond. I want to make it very clear that we talk to developers about this. Because they're the ones who are taking the financial risk. And we said, in no way do we want something like this to curb potential third units in, at a, on site. And they actually said, it would be a good thing because right now, with no parameters, we're competing with other people who are just maxing out FAR. We're going to do the easiest thing possible, which is the three-story box, the open-style lots. It's a lot easier than rehavin a one-hundred-year-old house, which might be historically significant. So that people care about that. So they said, yeah, I'm doing, and they're doing the math. Mine's right there while we're doing the math. And they're like, sure, a twelve-hundred square foot unit instead of, say, a two-thousand square foot unit, that works for me because I'm still able to, on a different unit size, we can attract a wider share of the market.
Well, I guess the question to me is, if we refer it, that means that the current situation is kind of a main.
Right, and that's.
Other than the fact that we're not doing it on the actual.
Right. It's, it is about risk. Like I said, for the T districts, the planning board and the CBA do not have regulatory tools to negotiate with developers for adaptive reuse of smaller unit sizes. And regarding the single-family districts, we still don't know how the AG is going to render a decision and how the state will promulgate regulations regarding capping the number of AUs, if that can be done.
Paul, one last, one last point. I wish I had actually provided the other maps, but I have all the other maps. Yeah, fifty other articles. When you overlay, and you can't do it on one map because it's so complicated. Seven, eight, nine, fourteen, fifteen. Many of these parcels are being modified by multiple parties. The complexity is actually overwhelming. Well, that's, but you, but you can't see, you can't see all the individual ones. And, you know, and again, I, I, I'm making the argument that the folks that will receive this zoning change have not been asked, the developers, to be consulted. But, but the communities and the neighborhoods have not been asked about these special changes and how they relate to AUs, or how they relate to Article eight and that again, additional unit, you know, and if a single family by, just like eliminating the, the minimum lot size, or nine, which adds a third unit. These are very complicated issues. And Article fifteen, in and of itself, is rezoning eighty-five-hundred parcels, and I think according to Parisian calculations, it's fifty-six or fifty-seven hundred of those lots that actually could turn into an additional AUs, which is a break for additional housing, but it's a lot to it.
Okay, Jeff. I do just want to, like, Articles eight and nine are serious issues, right? Anyone file, so say, well, there hasn't been, that, that creates perverse consequences if you file one. Right, if you're talking about. You only have to file one, what, ninety days, seventy-five days of the, the meeting? You know, I think you have to make a distinction here, processes. And again, I'm not saying this to, to, you know, to, to denigrate those articles of petition. They're, they're, they follow.
They are certainly complicated for that.
Well, they, they, you know, they, they follow their process, and I don't want to, like, shake that finger. My, what I'm saying is, if you take that layer, if you take that level of, if, if you take that position that everything has to be socialized like that in order for it happens, then you, it's impossible if they give the deadline seventy-five days. Right, and then.
But that's not what this, Article seven is, is from the planning board.
Yes, right, and I just wanted to make that distinction there, is that we're not, I don't, I don't want you to be, I don't, I don't want us to be in a situation where people feel like, oh, this is. It's incentivized to file articles, again, not that these decisions did, I don't think that at all. But in the future, people saying, oh, you know, I can shut down a zoning article by filing something that had the worst impact in the past. So just a flag here.
So in regards to noted, and keep in mind, we talked about all of the AUs parcels that we see impacted. That was really part of our emphasis to file something for this town. It really wasn't any way to get around the cost plan, but we really felt that this was important to have a companion to the AUs. Files, which we have no choice.
I don't see that in check, trying to get along the cost plan.
No, I just want to make that clear that we respect the process. And furthermore, we had two public meetings on the planning board prior to this meeting, the Warren article. We emailed all of the town meeting members and the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance, which is a network of all the neighborhood associations, which they were really pleased and, and, but. Why don't more people do that? Why don't more people do this?
But this map was not developed to be over.
We needed to clear the number, the number of districts, and there were representatives from various districts who, I haven't heard any complaints of opposition.
So you're, you're saying that there was no.
There absolutely wasn't.
Everyone in town, you know, understanding or knowing and understanding what the processes we use provided notice that is difficult for the article.
So can I move the modified language, please? To get at the back.
Okay, so accomplish something, right?
Yeah.
Moving. The move. All in favor, please indicate by a down. So yeah.
Aye.
Michael Sherman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Forman.
Aye.
Okay, so where are we now?
So what I'd like to do now is, I'd like to move that we defer Article seven to the company's committee. So there's getting consistent with the motion, not the advisory.
Are we ready for that, to, to repurpose this thing?
I have the question, but essentially, I'm the same mindset as Paul and John on this.
Don't have to do a webinar, we'll, we'll. Do your motion. Okay, all in favor, what is the motion?
I'm, I'm moving to refer Article, the amended Article seven to the company's committee.
Okay, and it's that the, that's simple for the. I guess, you know, my, my question is, what would I really need? I can really ever answer that.
Well, we, so we, we are. So I don't, I don't, I don't know why you're now adding a bunch of requirements of explanation. We've deferred Article eight, we've deferred Article nine, we've deferred Article fourteen, I think unanimously. So I'm moving to refer the, the Article seven, the subsequent of Article seven, to the operating committee.
Okay, so move, all in favor, John Goff, so yeah.
Aye.
Michael Sherman. David Forman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Okay, I don't know. Okay, so three to two is happy. Next, reconsideration of Article fifteen. And we're reconsidering the correct language mistakes that were picked up by the advisory committee. And you can find an explanation in Elise Jonas's amendment in our green-colored supplemental materials that you should have received by U.S. mail yesterday. Any, do you want to, who can explain this?
So my, my understanding is that, well, at the advisory committee, that's been following very close. I've been intimately involved with Roger, making the negotiation. That the advisory committee changed the setback, the one that was collected from that, from being allowed to go to ten feet, it's being restricted to fifteen feet in various. So that's how close the, the new building could go to the back of the property. Did I get that right, Parker?
If you would present the, the.
S seven. For the smallest, the smallest districts. The advisory committee has adopted that. The petitioners of the, replaced the motion, we all have the motion. And I'm also supporting the, the, the. Am I understanding it as in, supporting the email, therapy, or the topic of the before?
Oh, she's in the back there, she's second.
Okay. Paul.
Didn't see her in the back.
All right, okay. Do you have anything to add, Karen? I'd rather stick forward. Any, first of all. I'm actually a little surprised that, the sense that I have is that the advisory committee, he folds, he folds the number out of the air. And we're surprised that you've done, well, the problem with there are, it's just one of those things that, well, okay, I think you get the rest of it done.
You think it's, it's going to get something out of the box rather than having that?
Okay, all right, fair enough. I can, I can go with that.
But it's not a motion.
Okay, so I move reconsideration of Warren Article fifteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
John Goff, so yeah. Aye.
Michael Sherman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Forman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I move, I move approval of Warren Article fifteen as amended by the, by the description of the amendment in the green supplemental page, eliminating language in the setback. Let's see. Okay, is that, okay, I just move along without going into detail. And reading all these numbers. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
John Goff, so yeah.
Michael Sherman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Forman.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, moving right along. We have next on the agenda.
Before we move off of the Warren Articles, we received two emails to the board on Article six. One was from Dick Benko, raising a concern about Chappell, but essentially being able to null, nullify the agreement that was in place. And then a second issue raised by Elizabeth Jonas, that has to do with the sustainability and the transferability of the covenant, sure the property is sold. Chad and I spoke a little bit about this beforehand, but it sounds like a good thing. But it'd be good to, I need to take a listen here.
So Elizabeth Jonas had done some research and noticed that the restricted covenant did not include explicit reference that finding of the success of the science. She raised that concern. We reached out to something called Realogy to get them to agree that it would be, so that it is explicitly in there. I do want you to understand, though, that even though it wasn't explicitly in there, restrictions that benefit the public are, of course, for the ability. So it's very unlikely this could have left a concern or avoided the restricted covenant today. However, to address the concern, it's not explicitly in the, in the, in the trust.
We don't have to, we don't.
No, because the language is, that, you know, town meeting is authorized, it's left for to sign this if.
What about the issue with that?
So that is a little hard, that's just arose. The idea is that this restricted covenant is to be in place while the property is being restricted for the forty B property. It's a permit, not a restriction. So the applicant can always modify that comprehensive permit, which is not easy, but is possible. So if they were to modify the comprehensive permit, then it would go back to the EPA, go back to essentially the housing bill committee. But if they were to do that, then they're allowed to put this property back in place. Because right now, they've used the property to create their own need. This might be able to be used if they need to model, switch, you know, change their plan. But it isn't the situation where they could come forward and say, we don't want to have a forty B for the moral of the business. The bare description then would break the property.
So what is the risk of that? We talked about building, the exam, and on a fire.
But it's, but it's, but the possibility of owners to speak on a vacation. That's what I mean. But it would still be before, you know, the public filter, whether.
They could take that. You got, without, without burning down one of the walls, I know. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I think, and it expires, the risk expires when they get a, when they get a lot of people, right? They got.
It, it's just kind of, you know, being consistent with the idea of the market. That have a plan, that have a rented plan, the rest of it's being restricted. It is no longer being permitted and restricted. Can we, you know, put this back in play and that negotiation, we can get a public deal?
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is the naming committee. Your appointments of Nancy Carroll, a appointee of the parking operations committee, and David Mark Gossing, the appointee of the advisory committee. All in favor, please can you give a say aye.
John Goff, so yeah. Aye.
Sherman.
Aye.
David Forman.
Aye.
David Forman.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Paul Warren.
Very.
Paul Warren.
Oh, that's why you said we wanted to.
I don't know what you did.
Okay. Moving right along. Brookline Commission for the Arts, your appointment of Stan Becker. All in favor, please can you give a say aye.
John Goff, so yeah. Aye.
Michael Sherman.
Yes, aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Forman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And with that, unless there's anyone who would like to make a post-meeting comment, in for me? Thank you. And six to five, so we can go.